Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's virtual meeting of Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. Again, I will read a brief intro from our governor, and then we'll get rocking. In pursuit of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in or parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Norton's website, that is, NortonMA.org. To join this meeting, you may participate in the following ways, be it a Zoom link available in the meeting agenda. If you prefer to use the Zoom app directly, the meeting ID is 638-929-1060. There is also a dial-in number on the agenda posted for this meeting. You can also view the meeting on Norton Cable Access Channel 15, or the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. Again, no in-person attendance of members of the public is being permitted, but every effort we've made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of or during the meeting to Paul D. DeZeppe, the town planner, whose email address is available on the agenda. Again, you'll find meeting materials on the Town of Norton's Planning Board website, so you can follow along right along with us. Again, every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. If we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton's website an audio or video recording transcript or other record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. Well, with that out of the way, move right ahead to Planning Board business and policies. I don't think we have anything on the adocket for that at this point, Paul.
No.
But we do have a bill in the Dropbox here, and that is related to the master plan from Serpent, correct?
Correct. Right, for the services they've provided so far. They are actually now drafting the plan, and I'm expecting to receive it either this week or next. So, but the bill was pretty substantial because of all the work leading up to the last public event and then developing the framework for the plan. So, we're really excited about what we will be getting soon.
Okay. And you do have, I saw that there are open house dates scheduled as well virtually later this month.
Yeah, there will be. We'll announce that. The last, the very last part of our public outreach will be the public having a chance to review the plan, and then, of course, we'll bring the draft to the board for you. It's up to the board ultimately to decide if you want to adopt it or recommend it to Town Meeting.
Thank you very much. Again, because we're in crazy COVID times, this isn't, the bill isn't going up for a vote, but again, if we have any questions or comments about the bill available in the folder, now's the time.
Tim, this is Kevin. I have a question. Looking at it, it's all hourly rate, it's all labor cost, if you would, and it looks like the detail down below notes 250 hours, 7940 dollars regular time, zero overtime. But then up above, it has a direct salary, 7940, and it has an over, what's O wage? Overtime hours?
Overhead, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
An overhead rate that goes on the hours?
Oh, gotcha.
So that's like for like printing, or, you know, like normally consultants will add an overhead rate to just cover normal office, you know, expenses.
So it's not, by any means, itemized, it's just kind of a factor they apply to the actual salary amount? Okay. I was curious where that 9131 came from.
Sorry, Paul. I'm like speaking, probably speaking out of turn, I apologize.
All right. No, that's good. Thank you, Julie.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you for bringing it up, Kevin. And thank you, Julie, for your clarification on that. I think that's probably an easier way to do it than for them to tell us that they made 237 copies of X document.
And one other question, Tim, Paul, if we go over the grant amount of $60,000, then what happens?
So, Kevin, there's actually three different funding sources. We were, so we just went over on one. We received a $30,000 grant from the state that we spent first. So this actually moves that, we are now cleared through that. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, at Town Meeting, the town passed $30,000 to help toward the, toward the, to the development of the plan. That's where we're at now, and then as the balance of it, we have $40,000 that we received directly from Serpent itself through the direct local technical assistance grant. So, you know, we still have quite a bit of wiggle room here. Hopefully, we won't tap it all out, but hopefully then that money, the way we're planning it is, you know, any remaining DLT funds would, could go back and be used by the town for some other planning initiatives.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And all of these revolving accounts kind of closed out at some point and brought back to the general fund. I just want to make sure we don't run out of money as we get to the end of this master plan, so it doesn't sound like we will.
Right, and that's something I work periodically with their project manager to go over what the balances are, so that's something we actually will be doing soon here, especially with us, you know, getting into the last phase of it. You know, I let, note, I emailed them just what I told you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. And to clarify, we're using state money first, Serpent money second, and our own money last?
State money first, our money, then Serpents.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for moving that along, Paul. Are there any further questions about this bill? Okay. Moving right along, we have two sets of minutes to approve here. We have the minutes of April the 6th, and then the minutes of April the 27th. I will start with the oldest meeting first. Again, we have, we had these in our folder last time, and there were a couple of items that were incomplete, so we pushed them to today's meeting. Are there any further comments or changes requested for the minutes of April the 6th?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go through the roll, but obviously two people weren't with us at that point, so Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. And Wayne and Alan, obviously you guys would be abstaining from this one.
Yes, abstaining.
And for April the 27th, our last meeting, everybody gets to play in the font here. Do we have any questions or edits on these seven minutes?
Yeah, and the adjournment, looks like it was copied and pasted from the one before, because it has Orin, I think, as motioning to adjourn, and it's the same time as the last one, I think it was earlier.
So yeah, the beginning of those minutes is the same, too. Where it still has Orin and Joe Fernandez.
That is correct. So that would need to be updated, Paul. And of course, now you are Nicole-less, so that makes it another thing to add to the Do we want to, if we don't have any edits to the content of the minutes in terms of the actual discussions, I would follow the rest of the board's lead, whether you would like to approve with changes on the attendance and the adjournment, or whether you'd prefer to approve these at our next session.
I'll motion to approve with those clerical changes.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will roll, go through the full roll now, starting with Wayne.
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. So those minutes will be approved with adjustments, and that takes care of that. So, the next item on our agenda is the, is a public hearing for special permit 9414, which is 242 Mansfield Avenue, which is the application for site plan approval and special permits for a marijuana establishment and 25 or more parking spaces. I see we have people on the call here, both from Solar Retail Norton, as well as some other people here. So I will, obviously, we heard from you guys with a presentation last week, but in terms of opening the full public hearing, if you could just go ahead and kind of start from the top, so everything that is part of the project is part of this public hearing. Stu, you are muted. I gotta tell you before you get too far into it, a great opening line.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Stuart Clark with Green Seal Environmental. I'm the site designer for this project. We are, as you said, looking for a special permit and site plan review to operate marijuana dispensary at 242 Mansfield Ave. We also are seeking a special permit to have a parking lot with over 25 parking spaces in. I think, you know, based on our conversation last week, I'll just go through the existing site, and I have a presentation that I can put up if I'm allowed to share screen.
You should be able to, go right ahead.
All right. And now I'm going to get my presentation. All right. So, yeah, as I was discussing, we are, have a special permit application in front of the board.
Hey, Stu, I apologize, we can't see it, we can see it background.
You see your desktop.
Oh, how do I get it to the other screen? Drag it over?
Stu, when you go to the bottom of the screen, and it clicks shared screen?
Yeah.
You'll see a number of screens pop up, highlight the one with your presentation on it.
All right, here it comes. Oh, I am challenged here.
It's the same one that you sent earlier?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna run.
I think it's the green rectangle, the green.
I've lost everybody now, oh my goodness. I apologize for my.
The other option is to drag your presentation to your other window.
It's my idea.
If it's maximized, you have to hit the escape key on your keyboard.
Oh, that's the escape key, there we go. Drag this over here, drag this over here. Boom.
There we go.
There we go. We can do this. Stuff far, I better get this thing out here.
And you can hit present, Stu, that should give it.
Yeah, there we go. All right, there we go. Now it's starting to look like something.
Now we're cooking with gas.
Yeah, I wanted to go through a quick little agenda of what we're trying to accomplish here. I'll give you a quick little site overview, existing conditions, proposed development, what we're looking to do on this site, and then Andres here, he can talk about the interior layout, security considerations, and the operation of the business. Sorry, I'm real quick on my button here. And then after that, we'd like to take questions and answers from the board and the public office.
Thank you.
As you can see, this is the existing site. It was the old Norton Mini Golf Ice Cream Place. It's right up by Exfinity Center in the town line. It contains about 130, 1.39 acres. There's an existing building in there with some parking, paved parking, plus they did some additional parking for event parking for the Exfinity Center as another means of making money. It's in the commercial zone, and it also falls in the marijuana overlay district. The parcel has both town water and sewer, and it's shown on map 3 as lot 732 of the assessors. It's bordered on the northern side by Cumberland Farms, and on the southern side by New England Ice Cream. And the Norton Estates is to the east and Mansfield Ave, I mean, just the opposite. Norton Estates is to the west, and Mansfield Ave is towards the east. We intend to remove the existing structure and parking area and regrade the site. The intention here is to lower some of the grades in the back and raise them in the front. It goes from about elevation 102 in the back to 90 something in the front, if I remember right. I can't really see it on this small screen.
Does have a pretty good slope to it, as is, yeah.
Yeah, it's got like a 10-foot slope to it. We just want to take the curse out of that hill, flatten it out some, so that we can get some ADA compliance. And typically, in parklot design, you don't want to have more than like a 5% slope, or the doors of the cars won't stay open, that kind of stuff. We're gonna remove all the existing lighting and put in new lighting. The other lighting, I don't think would comply with the town ordinances. Then we're doing brand-new stormwater controls, so that we need stormwater policy as well as the Norton's stormwater bylaw. We're proposing to collect the stormwater off of the parking lot, and we're going to treat it through deep sump, deep sump, Hoot and Catch basins, which remove sediment and oils as a pretreatment, then going to an offline oil grit separator, which is a best management practice by the DEP, recognized by the DEP. And then for final disposal, we are going to infiltrate on-site. The site really doesn't have an adequate outlet to release it on the surface, so we're going to infiltrate it all. That's gonna require us to put in a lot of chambers, about 72 of these chambers, that are about 42 inches high and 7 feet long. But it's the best way to attack this site without putting water onto Route 140. All the roof runoff will be a direct infiltration into the same similar chambers, but we don't have to provide treatment to that because it's not coming off the parking lot surface. We do have a robust planting schedule, we're planning to use some of the boulders. The soils on that site are very stony, and we expect to dig up a lot of boulders and stones as we do our site grading. We're gonna use those as accent boulders, and similar to the picture shown here, just to beautify the site, we've proposed a bunch of canopy trees, both native and ornamental, which provide some wildlife function, and the shrubs as well are wildlife-focused and The lighting we have proposed is LED lighting, which is the standard in the industry now. It consumes less energy, it puts off a bright light, which is a good light. We went back and forth with Paul and the lighting designer relative to the lighting approach. We were having some spillover on some of the commercial properties and the residential property in the rear, so we ended up switching out and going to some different light standards and putting on some wall packs. So as, not as presented, but as revised, there will be no site layer over the .1 lumens at the property line, which is required by the town code. I guess Andre might want to talk to you a bit about this, but we're looking for a clean look, similar to this structure here. It's a clean, modern look. It's not, yeah, just a clean, modern look. I guess, Andre, could you talk a little bit about the architecture and where we're going with this?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much, Stu. Hello, everyone. So as Stu mentioned, and as you can see in this photograph here, we're really going for kind of a clean, modern look with this building. This is actually very close to what the building will look like from the exterior with those plant panels. A big thing for us on this project is gonna be the sustainability and efficiency of the building, so we're still exploring kind of the final materials we'd go with, but it's most likely gonna be on the cutting edge of sustainability and efficiency. So we can go on to the next slide. And here, we just wanted to present for the board the interior layout of the building, as well as some of our security considerations. So what you see on the left here is the floor plan of the building, and I've got a green arrow here that's gonna show you the customer's flow through the retail portion of the building, so they'll come into the double doors there and will be faced with the security check-in desk, where their identification and age will be verified, at which point they will be buzzed into the main retail floor, which is approximately 1,100 square foot space accessible to the public. We set up the checkout counter up against the top of the back wall there, and that's where we'll have approximately six window sale terminals, where customers will be able to complete their transaction and then come back out of the retail space out through that second door and make their way out of the building. The remaining approximately 2,500 square feet of the building, which is the right side of the building, is going to be the supporting function of the business, so everything from shipping and receiving through the secured vault, restrooms, employee breakroom, as well as management office and secure storage, and utilities in there. I just want to very quickly speak to the security of the premises, so as you may already know, this is something that is highly regulated by the state and the CCC. But just as a quick overview, there are two principles in place. The first part is that the building is split up into three levels of access. The general area here is this green area where folks will be able to, so, you know, public off the street, once they're in and identification verified, they'll be able to access that main vestibule, as well as public restrooms that we have behind that main vestibule. And then what you have with the blue section you see there is the section of the premises that's accessible upon verification and actual, you know, the buzzing in by the security staff of the clients into the main retail area. And then everything that is in red is a top level of security that essentially needs a RFID badge to be able to get into. So in addition to these levels of access, the site is gonna be secured with exterior and interior closed circuit, television, video surveillance, and that is gonna be coupled with alarm coverage throughout the building, so entry alarms, breakage alarms on the glass, things like that. In addition to that, there will be on-site security personnel during operating hours. Regular day-to-day operations will follow our strict transportation and delivery procedures for all product deliveries, and, you know, we're gonna be following well-established crowd and traffic control measures to ensure that we have a smooth flow of both customer and vehicle traffic on the premises. Finally, we'll be working with the police department in town to establish a lot of our protocols in town, and also the Norton PD will have direct access to our video surveillance feed for the premises. So I believe that's all we have. We definitely want to be able to leave some room for a Q&amp;A session both from the board as well as the general public. So that's all we have for our primary presentation, and at this point, I think you'd like to open it up for Q&amp;A?
Sure. Now, as the board, if they have any initial questions, I do see Patrick Brennan, I believe, from Emory Engineers here, who did some of the peer review for the stormwater. But if we have any initial questions off of that presentation, we can dive into those, otherwise, I think that would be the next plus place to start. Hearing none, I guess, Patrick, you would be up next, just going over the peer review you did regarding the stormwater and a couple of the elements.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Pat Brennan with Emory Engineers. I reviewed the initial, you know, the plans, the original plans, and submitted a letter last week, dated May 5th. Stuart had sent revised plans over, let's see, yesterday or the day before, which I took another look at. Those plans have addressed the majority of my comments. I did send another letter in today, and basically, the one comment that is still kind of outstanding is some additional soil testing in the area of that large subsurface filtration system that's taking the runoff of the parking lot. When they did their soil testing on-site, they were only able to get down just over nine feet, and that was to about elevation 113.3, and the bottom of that system is at elevation 113, so they have to get about another two and a half feet of depth to verify that they have adequate separation of groundwater. And like I said, that's, that's the, really the only outstanding issue at this time. The revised plans, you know, I had some issues with the amount of chambers. Stuart clarified that in his presentation, letting you know the 72 chambers in that system, and that does mitigate the runoff from all storms, all the design storms, which, you know, typically are the 210, 250 gear storm event. So the flow, the post-development runoff would be less than existing conditions for each of those design storms, both in the rate and the volume runoff, as that system, as Stuart mentioned, the majority of the stormwater would recharge back into the ground. I believe most of the other comments were pretty much editorial in nature. The one, one other thing that came from the revised plans was when they did their sweat path analysis for the fire department apparatus, they did realize that they had to widen the traffic aisle closest to Mansfield Ave. They had to make that two feet wider to make sure that the fire apparatus could make it through that parking lot without, without any issues with parked cars or anything like that, so they made that revision as well. And I did, you know, with your stormwater bylaw, the Norton Stormwater bylaw, it requires that you either retain it requires that you, you either retain the first inch of runoff on site or you do treatment for phosphorus and total suspended solids. And with that infiltration system, both the large one for parking lot and the system that they're proposing for the roof drain, they're infiltrating everything up through the minimum of the 10-year storm and potentially up to the 25-year storm. So the first roughly five inches of runoff will be infiltrated on site and will flow out toward Mansfield Avenue. So it meets your stormwater bylaw and not respect five four-holt because one inch is your requirement. They're meeting, they're retaining nearly five inches on site. So, you know, I think with the revised plans, the, you know, the soil testing, if they're unable to do that prior to the close of the public hearing, I would, in the board were to approve the project. I'd just recommend that that be a condition of approval that they do that soil testing right at the initial stages so that we can make sure that we have that adequate separation from storm, from groundwater. If there isn't, there's some ways to revise that system to provide that separation. It could be, you know, they could make it larger, but lower profile would be probably the main way that they would make that change. That's, that's pretty much where I am at this point. I did send the traffic reports out to Gillen Associates for review. I know there was a revised one came through yesterday and I know, I haven't received any review back from Gillen, but I would expect to get that probably this week or next for the traffic analysis. That's all I have at this point and I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
And to confirm the order of operations on that, McMahon and Associates had done the initial traffic review for the applicant. And what we're waiting on is the peer review of that?
Correct.
Okay. Stu, did you have any comments that you want to make in terms of the separation from groundwater that they had mentioned? If you plan to do additional testing now or whether you feel the condition's appropriate based on that?
Right. And I'm sorry we didn't get deep enough, but we only have a rubber tire machine out there to dig and nine, 10 feet was about as far as it could go. And the operator, like I told Pat, was a little bit challenged. He wasn't a good operator. We had a lot of fill in that area where we're putting the thing. I guess that must have been where they had the old golf course or the, you know, the clown's valve they had to hit the ball through. So there was a lot of fill there, but when we got down to the bottom of it, we got into the glacial till that we saw on the other pits. And I'm confident we can get there, but like Pat says, if we can't, we'll just have to, you know, lower the profile and make a larger footprint for that system. But it is doable and we will get it done. I just use these chambers because they're big, they're deep, and they hold a lot of water.
So just to confirm order of operations in my head, are you planning to do additional testing? Or would you prefer that just kind of be a condition?
I would like it to be a condition, I think.
Okay.
These is for us, then, you know, during construction, we can have Pat out there to look at it. Or I'm sure he's going to be inspecting the construction of that system.
Okay. Any members of the board with questions regarding the information that we have from Emery? I know the last round of comments came in earlier today with Pat's second round of comments. So we made it a little bit of time to digest here, but.
And Mr. Chairman, may I also add that at the last meeting, you guys asked us to incorporate those two 40Bs into the traffic study, which I did, and I sent that off to Paul. And I believe you guys got that in your packet.
We do have the initial review for McMahon in the packet. I think there's a couple of files in there with some, with an update in one of them. And I hadn't been able to detective to figure out what the change was, but, but they are in there, yes.
Tim, may I?
Julia, see you unmuting or you're preparing to?
Unmute, you, unmute, no, I'm kidding. Yeah, I did see the traffic stuff in there, Tim. And I believe the difference is adding those 40Bs between the two, because I took a quick look at them today. So thanks for that, Stu. I was wondering if you could just kind of walk me through what you guys have done for fencing on the site? I couldn't quite tell on the site plan. Are you keeping that white fencing across the back?
Yeah.
Kind of walk me through what you guys are thinking about from a fencing perspective for the site?
Yeah, that's a, that's a nice eight-foot tall, solid vinyl fence, stockade fence in the back, which really does provide a lot of screening to the trailer park up there. So, yeah, we want to keep that, no doubt. It's an expensive fence, eight foot is not typical, six-foot is your typical fence. In the front, we're going to take down that ugly chain link fence that's there and just open it up along the side with Cumberland bonds, that existing fence is going to remain. And based on Pat's comments, we're going to add a timber guard rail just on that one area where it's kind of gets steep, just to, you know, keep vehicles on our property at a level of safety. Other than that, all our screening is going to be by plant material.
Okay, so my next question was around signage. I didn't see in the plans if you were planning on doing, is it just signage on the building? Or could you walk, could you walk me through that too?
Yeah, I believe there's going to be signage on the building, building mounted on both the east side and the south side, which face the two parking lot areas. There's also an existing sign there that the applicant would like to, you know, change out, not change out, but you know, renovate. It's kind of an interior lit sign, kind of the old school looking, but he wants it for something new and fresh there that looks good. And all signs, all the signs are going to meet zoning code and we'll get the permission from the building department for that.
Okay, and then my last question is, have you guys given any thoughts to hours of operation for the establishment?
Sure, Julia, we have. And so in our application, we've got them set at seven days a week, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I think technically seeking some local police detail to help with traffic. And then typically what we like to do is once you get able to gather some data, the impact, then we can evaluate tapering that off or, you know, adjusting it as necessary. But that would probably be my, my, those would be my initial thoughts. As far as whether it would make sense to close a little bit early, you know, I don't know that it's, I can't say that I'm very excited about that, Tim. I think that, you know, typically my, my understanding is that the concerts are out by 11:00. And so that was one of the reasons we proposed a closing time of 10:00. And so we don't want to be open when the concert's out. And so I think that that coupled with sort of a practical approach in the very beginning to kind of get our bearings around what we have to deal with, I think, you know, will, will be in pretty good shape.
And obviously, is the town manager still looking for guidance on and information on how we feel about moving back to in-person meetings and also where might that be, secondary question?
Well, he did ask and I haven't followed up with him other than just to say that you were waiting for direction with, from the town on that.
Okay. If anybody on the board would like to weigh in now, they certainly can. Otherwise, if we have any specific individual comments we'd like to make, we can send them to Paul for combination or forwarding to the town manager. But if anybody would like to, yeah.
I was gonna say, is anybody else meeting in person? I believe the school committee meeting, the school meeting in person, but like spaced out six feet apart or something? I was just curious what other boards were practicing, if we were in line with them, which I'm assuming we are, but I just was kind of curious.
I believe the, I believe the assessors board has met in person, but there's only three of them. And they actually meet in the assessors office, so they may.
We're gonna, we're gonna take up the whole second floor if we meet in your office, Paul.
Right, yeah. So, but conservation is not, ZBA is not, select board isn't, FinCom is not. So there may be a couple of exceptions, but the ones that tend to draw more are still. One good bit though, I don't recall if I had mentioned this to you, but we, I talked with, with Jason from the media center and they have the ability in their, in their space and that at the library to do a hybrid meeting. So we could do an in-person and for participants to be able to use Zoom. You would just be seeing it off of a monitor in front of you. And, you know, I would have a laptop or, so it's a possibility that even, you know, as we transition back into in-person meetings, we can do a hybrid. And we may decide that we'd like to give people an opportunity, even when we go full-on into in-person meetings, that, you know, members of the public or say an applicant or a peer reviewer who might not be able to make it here, could use Zoom as a way of still participating in, at the meeting.
Plus, plus, I will have my notepads and notes to take with me to take notes while watching the meeting in public at the library or maybe the media center.
Right, right. So, so we will, we will have the ability to, you know, be even more transparent, to continue to use Zoom in a very effective manner. And people could then decide, you know, if they choose to come in. Obviously, the state's going to rule on boards' participation. As you recall, before COVID, it was pretty strict. Only one, I think it was only one member could remotely participate during a meeting, right? And, but.
Remember, it doesn't go back that far, Paul, I don't.
Yeah, it's, you know, 2019, but we have to see what the rules will be. I hope, you know, there's certainly a lot of discussion that I've heard through the Mass Chapter of American Planning Association that we'd love to see boards have more, more flexibility and see what the rules could be for that and certainly allowing the public to do it. But, but at this point, we're still under an emergency order and we haven't heard anything what the governor wants to do at that point.
And you mentioned a hybrid meeting. Are you saying that the board would be in one location, members of the public would be in another?
No, I just meant that you could go back to in-person, but it would allow the ability.
Okay, at either location, not at like a dual site, okay.
No, no. But, you know, certainly when we, you know, my assumption is when we first go back, there may be capacity limits. So we might really want to encourage the public to still Zoom in. You know, I really wouldn't want to get into that situation of turning people back.
Especially because by the time they arrive, we would probably be fairly close to starting the meeting and then they would miss the beginning of the meeting and that would be a situation we would like to avoid, I agree. Yeah, okay.
In addition to that, Paul, the hybrid model allows for better presentation of material many times because, you know, in the selectmen's meeting room, which I know we can't use right now due to the safety and all, but, you know, putting the non-cable camera on the, on the screen and showing it at a, you know, strange angle and it's not very clear for the public, whether reviewing on TV is not good. So to have applicants be able to share their screen via Zoom, even if we were all, you know, in a site together, holding the meeting, I think is advantageous for the general public as well.
That's a great point. That's a great point, right? I think if we go this route, we should just ask them to do that.
To a point, it's our, it's our opportunity to remake the status quo for what we want our meetings to look like as a glide path towards whatever, however it's going to go, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to Kevin's, Stu, there were plenty of times when people brought up their, their poster boards. And because of the L shape, some of us at one end couldn't see it from, from, from our seated positions. We'd have to get up and, yeah, this is much easier for everybody to see. So we could, we could, you know, at that point, put in a policy to say that, you know, either they present it through Zoom or they give it to me and I put it up and have it available for people to see it. And then the other thing we'll need to figure out as a board too is would we, you know, prior to going into lockdown, we would give you paper copies? Is that something that you would still want to do or some of you want to do? Would some of you prefer to bring your laptops in or whatever device you're using? You know, that's a logistical thing that we would just need to know as we start to plan to go back. Certainly, there's, there's, it's much easier when it's all digital, but, you know, we want to make sure that you all are getting what you need, but, you know, until we're there. But that's just something we'd really like to know or just to be thinking about at this point.
Okay. Well, again, if anybody has any further comments, thoughts, please send them to Paul and he can share them with town manager and other people as we continue to move forward with all of this day by day, as we have been for the last 14 months. Hooray. Obviously, I know a number of people were at town meeting on Saturday. Number of items were passed, including the new town hall senior center and update to the fields through the schools as well. And the, of the three articles that we had participated in, the marijuana bylaw updates passed, the change in zoning across from Blue Star with Mass DOT passed, and White Street did not.
So, and just to let you know, yesterday, so when that happens, we're required, any zoning bylaw has to go to the attorney general for them to review it and approve it. So yesterday I gave the material that's needed to the town clerk and hopefully this week he'll send it out to the, to the AG's office for approval.
There's a process that a number of us dived all too deeply into with a previous application in terms of the process of submitting things to the attorney general and getting it back.
Still going through it.
Yes.
But hopefully, hopefully, hopefully it's resolved. Spoke to town council on Saturday and, you know, we, you know, we're, we're still waiting for the October, from the October special town meeting for them to be, for the AG to sign off on it. They're, they have a question about, remember when it was, it was supposed to go, those items were supposed to go in May and were continued through to October and we said, referred to committee. They're wondering what that happened, you know, what happened with that. But, you know, looking back through communications, town council said, you don't have to have a public hearing if your public, if your town meeting's within six months of when you continued it, which we were. So the challenge, just, just so you know, obviously, we just had this conversation on marijuana. That bylaw and the rezoning is still, it's in effect, but subject to the attorney general approving it. Additionally, the village center court, you know, the new, the new language and the rezoning. The good news is there's a couple of projects brewing in the village center. We've been in discussions with, with one site, which I'm very excited about. And then I've heard another property, there's a sale pending on it. But we have to always disclose to people who are affected that, you know, you have to proceed at your own risk at this point. I mean, we feel confident, especially with village center and even the marijuana, that we feel confident it'll pass at the AG. But it being still hanging out there because of, you know, because of the logistical aspect of what happened has, I can tell you, one potential buyer is not going through with the sale until they hear that it's all good.
Paul, can we, can we reach out to, well, does anybody have any influence over the Attorney General's office if we were to, you know, explain that we have potential development that's pending?
I, I've passed that along to town council. I, I, thank you. You know, I mean, I guess, well, you know...
Like a state, like a state representative, for example, that can speak on our behalf?
That's a possibility.
You can ask, like...
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm not stepping on toes here.
Then maybe something to discuss with town manager and potentially town council. Not as much as an influence, or at least just a peek behind the schedule, eh?
Yeah, or a timeline, like when, I mean, I don't think that we're out of bounds to maybe ask for, like, what's a potential timeline to hear, hear for those things, you know, so that...
Are we three in line or 26th in line?
Yeah.
Yeah, anything that just tries to open up the lines of communication, because six months should be enough time, but, you know, I know that, you know, Jay Barrows is a very big advocate for growth, business growth in town, and I don't know what, if he has any relationships with anybody at the AG's office, you don't want to, I'm not saying pressure or anything, but just, you know, a little bit of communication to let them know that, like you just explained to us, Paul, that we have potential, you know, developers and a new, you know, Village Center Corps that are interested in moving forward, but they're not going to until we have full approval from the AG's office, just...
So let me, let me talk to the town manager and see what he advises. I think this, you know, I think that's, I'd like to see whatever we can do to nudge it along.
Yeah, and I think six months, you know, we're not, it's not like it's been 30 days, and we're like, what's going on? You know, just get an update would be, you know, like we're saying, a timeline or something like that, because...
They have 90 days, the AG, but they have the right to ask us for an extension. But it's, it's frustrating, right? We all worked hard to get all of these changes through. We're seeing potentially the benefits of it. And, you know, the last thing any of us want is to see someone invest a lot into a property and have a, you know, have something bad happen at this point, a bad surprise. Then I, I'm optimistic it'll be resolved to get it. You know, we followed council's advice, we did it to the T, and, you know...
We are hanging a hand on that, and that's all we can do.
Yeah.
That's what we pay town council for.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else, anyone else, any other members of the board would like to raise or discuss?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll go second. Okay, I heard two seconds there, and let me give that one to Alan. So Julie with the motion and Alan with the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? On the motion to adjourn, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of your evening.